I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to a town hall meeting hosted by State Representative Ken Smith of the 112th Legislative District. Many of you know us, my name is LeAnn Munley. I'm Ken's Chief of Staff and our staff members, Lisa Padula and John McGurll are here with us this evening. Ken also has a very capable assistant in Harrisburg, some of you may know her, Sharon Steph. And tonight, we're very appreciative to have with us Michael Byrne, Holly Chase, and Dan Mallinson as our guest speakers. You'll be hearing from them in just a short time. Tonight, it's my privilege to introduce to you your State Representative, Mr. Ken Smith.
And before I get started, I want to thank my staff for all of their hard work. We have Lisa Padula here tonight, who's on the front line and every day she manages the phones and when you're on the front line, especially during these days, you take some major hits. So, thank you for all your hard work. And my Chief of Staff, LeAnn Munley, is, you just saw LeAnn, and she does a great job after we meet with different people and get the, start to understand the challenges that they meet. I just very politely look at LeAnn, I say, "Handle this." And she does a great job at that. And John McGurll is here tonight and he's our technical guy. John, most of you people know John McGurll, he's a Dunmore boy and he does a great job. He loves these kind of nights. He loves to get the crowd together and get the software up and running and he's suffering tonight from the bubonic plague, but not even that could keep him from being here this And I want to thank each of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here this evening. But I truly believe that each of you being here tonight is a testament to the challenges that we faced, that we face not only here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but around the United States as well. And I'm sure that you're here to find out about our challenges and certainly not here because you want to look at me. So, the norm for myself this evening would be to come in and very informally, come in, say hello, introduce our experts here on their different topics and sit down. But I thought, in consideration of what we face here in Pennsylvania and the deficit that we face, I thought I would say a couple prepared words. And I'll start off by saying, each year around this time, the state legislature comes together to start the process of formulating the budget of the Commonwealth. This year, the General Fund for Pennsylvania will be approximately $27.8 billion. And at the same time, Pennsylvania will face an approximate $2.5 billion shortfall. How does this happen? There's the question. How do we, how does a $2.5 billion shortfall happen? And my answer to that is, I see the Commonwealth and its structure as a big ship. And as the economy slows and the national economy tanks, this ship keeps moving forward. And as revenues shrink, the demands on the budget continues. So, the budget has been set, moving forward. The revenues dry up, the demands keep moving forward, and before you know it, we're in a deficit mode. Remember, last year, last year, we had an approximate surplus of about $200 million. That's quite a reversal. The worst economic crisis of our lifetime has dramatically reordered priorities, not only in Harrisburg, but also Washington and throughout the world. Seventy-six thousand Pennsylvanians lost their jobs last year. Seventy-six thousand Pennsylvanians lost their jobs last year. That is the entire population of the city of Scranton. If we fail to act now to close the deficit gap, the consequences will be catastrophic. As we confront this challenge, I can tell you, as of today, as of today, and this could change, our budget for this coming year does not require a tax increase of the personal income tax, the state sales tax, or any business tax increase. Now, I say that and I think that's ambitious, but as of right now, I think, the Governor thinks we're in good shape. The Governor has suggested he would like to phase out the capital stock and franchise tax, which has boosted our total business tax reductions to over $2 billion in the past six years. We must be committed to the core budget principles. First, public safety. We must preserve public safety at all costs. We now have the highest authorized state police complement in the history of the Commonwealth. We must continue also to focus on the safety of our state prisons. Second, we must continue to provide as much support as possible to our needy families throughout Pennsylvania. As you will soon see on our PowerPoint presentation, the human services needs in the budget, primarily for the elderly and disabled, have increased by 276 percent. Also, as the economy becomes more challenged, the need for such services continue to grow. Here in Pennsylvania, we have discovered a source of natural gas. Finally, some good news. Scientists believe that if we can extract, and this is just a little reference, if we can extract just 10 percent, just 10 percent of this natural gas that exists below the Marcellus shale line, it would be enough gas to supply the entire United States for two years. Just 10 percent. Just 10 percent. The Commonwealth's budget proposes imposing an extraction tax, which will provide much needed revenue for the state. I must add that neighboring states such as West Virginia have already started this process and it has not impeded the process of business whatsoever. I truly believe that the Marcellus Natural Gas Shale Line here in Pennsylvania will do for us what oil has done for Texas. I truly believe that it will be that big. We, in addition to close the deficit gap, I believe it is the ideal time to tap the rainy day fund from each of our caucuses. Now, most of you probably know what the rainy day fund is. Each caucus in the House of Representatives, the Democrats and the Republicans, in the Senate, Democrats and the Republicans, by law, must have a rainy day fund. And I'll tell you a true story, I was on the floor of the House one day and one of the older representatives was standing there and he says, "You know, I don't know why we have to give up this money for the rainy day fund, it's not a rainy day." And maybe I misspoke, but I said, "You're right, it's not a rainy day, it's a monsoon." He didn't like my comment, but it's true. If we tap into that, we can, to close the gap, bring $750 million to the table to close the gap of the deficit. We as Pennsylvanians must be mindful of the fact that electricity rate caps expire in 2010. These potential rate increases will come at a time when we are in the midst of a deep recession. These increases will further burden our families who are already fighting to keep their heads above water. It is my hope we can either extend the rate caps or formulate a phase-in over a three-to-four year period. And I could tell you, as a business owner, if in fact, those rate caps come off and we do see a projected 30 to 35 percent increase in our electricity rates, I lock the door and I go home because I don't know a business that could sustain a 35 percent electricity cost and move on. With rate cap challenges in mind, I strongly believe that we must turn our efforts to renewable energy. This type of technology will ensure our leadership and success as a country throughout the 21st century. Last session, we approved an energy package that designated $600 million to renewable energy. I can tell you, I have personally been working with a company that is dedicated to renewable green energy. If we can see this plan to fruition, it will not only help us to become independent in our energy needs, but also boost, a big boost, to Northeast Pennsylvania in the form of jobs and economic growth. Jobs and economic growth, that's what it's all about. And this company, very briefly, takes municipal waste, municipal waste, garbage that we bury every single day. Instead of burying it, it puts it through a refinery process. First, it pelletizes it, and then it goes through a refinery. And it could either be used for electricity or for gas, for your car. It is incredible. Not only do we not have to bury our garbage anymore, but now, we save the land on landfill and we take this and we use what was a liability to our environment and turn it into an asset. This company came in, the two principals are originally from Pennsylvania, and they asked me if I would set up a little time with the Governor and his action team, to which I did. The Governor's action team was so excited, they immediately, while we sat there, brought in DEP and EPA. And they started a conversation to which it supersedes all criteria of EPA. It's environmentally friendly and it's green and at the same time, we become less dependent on foreign oil and become more self-sufficient on an energy level. I think that is very, very important if we're going to continue to move forward in the 21st century. We must also take action to address the issue of the medically uninsured. Across America, more than 45 million people are without health care. Here in Pennsylvania, more than 1 million people are without health care. We must not turn our back on these people during the most trying times. We must work together to ensure a common sense health care insurance plan. It is the Governor's idea to expand the Adult Basic Health Care Plan for Pennsylvania with the hope that a national health care plan will soon be put into action. Here in Pennsylvania, the state maintains more than 39,000 miles of roads, as well as 25,300 bridges. The Governor has earmarked $1 billion to invest into our bridges over a five-year period. This is essential to the public safety of all of our families. In addition, we hope to receive over $1 billion for the next two years from the federal stimulus project. Keep in mind, this is not just money spent, but it is money earned in construction, in construction jobs all across Pennsylvania. Just as we invest in our infrastructure, we must also invest in our country's greatest resource, our children. From pre-K counts to higher education, we must understand the importance of our intellectual infrastructure. Investing in education is the best way to minimize the impact of a recession and the fastest way to grow our economy and jobs. So, at the end of the day, our children can grow here in Pennsylvania, be educated in Pennsylvania, find good family sustaining jobs, and become the leaders in our global economy. Finally, may I say, I realize I spoke on some most difficult topics this evening, I truly feel, if we work together in the same direction for the same purpose, then we will witness Pennsylvania leading the country in the 21st century. I'm going to give you an example, examples, right here, right here in our backyard, what is happening in Northeast Pennsylvania. University of Scranton. University of Scranton is about to embark on a $70 million science building and project, which will then have an association with the proposed medical school. $70 million in science, that's 21st century. Marywood University is just starting a School of Architecture. That's 21st century jobs. Lackawanna College and Johnson College have come together, they have come to understand that if we want to meet the needs of Toby Hannah, Grumman, Specialty Defense Systems, General Dynamics, that are high-tech manufacturing jobs that have contracts in the defense field for the United States, if we want them to remain here, we must train our young men and women for these jobs. They are high-tech, it's not like the old factory years ago. This is, these are high-tech jobs that need special skills. Johnson College, Lackawanna College has witnessed this, they have stepped up to the plate. Toby Hannah alone, Toby Hannah alone, we must supply 300 jobs a year just to maintain the retirements. If we don't meet the need, then they leave, but we're meeting it. Wilkes University, they're going to develop a law school. We are about to embark on a project here, right in the city of Scranton, right in the 112th District, the first medical school built in Pennsylvania in more than 40 years. The first medical school built in Pennsylvania in more than 40 years, right here. This is us, this is our backyard, right here. Today, I met with the developer, developers of the abandoned laceworks down in Lower Greenridge. $73 million will go into that complex. And it's going to be a multitude of business and retail and living and it is a project beyond anyone's comprehension. It is spectacular. Lackawanna College is going to, behind the ice skating rink on the other side of the river, in that brown area, they're going to develop a football field and a track and cross-country. So, that whole area, instead of being abandoned by dumps and mines, is going to become vibrant and alive and jobs and people coming together as a community. You know, ladies and gentlemen, there's people from the outside looking at us and they see something here. They see a quality in us that I don't think we see in us. They believe in us, they believe in what we bring to the plate. We believe, they believe that we have a strong work ethic, we have a strong family ties, we have strong faith, and that's what they want. And they want to bring their businesses here. So, they believe in us and it's time that we start believing in ourselves. We have a great infrastructure here, we have great colleges and universities. We must believe in ourselves. And you know, I'm going to say something tonight that my staff is tired of me saying, but it's true. Thomas Paine, Thomas Paine, obviously many, many years ago, said, "These are the times that try men's souls. These are the most difficult of times." And you know, they are. And they were tough times then and they're tough times today. And this country has seen many highs and many lows and it has always come through. And I truly believe that this generation will rise to the occasion. Difficult times, yes. Impossible times, no. We're strong, we're Americans and we will survive, but we do it together, believing in each other. And you know, sometimes, as a State Representative, maybe as a Governor, as a local mayor, as a local council, as a, whatever form of government you're in, these are the times that try your soul because these are the times that you have to make decisions that are not necessarily popular and not easy. But if you don't make them today, then tomorrow, the consequences, as I said earlier, are enormous. And who pays for it? Our children. It's time to step up to the plate. We all have to have, as they say, skin in the game. Not easy, but together, together, we will survive, we will move forward, and we will see a country that it will go on anybody's comprehension. The best days in this country and this Pennsylvania has yet to be seen. Thank you very much. I, John, if, I just want to start very briefly, it'll take three minutes, we have a little high-tech slideshow here that I want to share with each of you. Maybe if we could even kill one of these lights. Thanks Frank, that's why you're, that's why you're going to make a good judge. You can see here lengths of recession. Now, I'm going to take you right down to the bottom, December of 2007, 12 months so far. The projection is, we're going to be in this recession maybe for another six to eight months. That'll mean 20 months we are in a recession. Look at, look at, I mean, from 1919 to 1945, 18 months. You see, this will be the longest recession since they kept records. So, we are, we are facing our challenges. Next, John.
Fiscal year 2009 revenue outlooks, that is, it's colored as an optimistic, not so optimistic. Pennsylvania at one point was optimistic, the color has since changed, we're not, we're not exactly optimistic anymore. West Virginia's optimistic, North Dakota, Texas, Oklahoma, and what is that other one? Wyoming, Wyoming, they are, they're optimistic. So, you can see the country is facing its challenges. Next, John. Right here, Commonwealth operating budget. You can see the General Fund over here, the $28 billion. You have the lottery fund there and the motor license, which continues to shrink. So, you could see that, once again, the operating budget, basically the operating budget is only half of the total budget for Pennsylvania. Next, John. General Fund expenditures, you can see here, education, pre-K counts, what is that, 30, is that 35 percent? And higher education is 7 percent. So, between, well, education total is 42 percent right there. You could see our, what is that, our debt revenue right there, that we must by law every year meet, is that about 3 percent, John? Is that what it is, 3 percent? Now, right over here, DPW, which is not Department of Public Works, that's the public, it's the Department of Public Welfare, along with medical assistance. You could see the high percentage that that brings, right there, in special human needs. It's, and as the economy worsens, that continues to broaden. Next, John. Out-year issues, demand for services, outpatients, that's right, as I said earlier, demand for services outpaces revenue growth. Continuing effects on, of baby boomers, the baby boomers are now retiring. Retirement costs increased dramatically, once again, the baby boomers are getting older. Healthcare inflation, nobody, nobody saw, I mean, 15 years ago, you didn't realize that healthcare inflation would be up about 600 percent. Transportation funds have declined in 2000, well, since actually 2008 through to '11, they're going to continue to decline. And of course, we have one-time fixes, such as the rainy day fund, which help, but at the end of the day, we can't count on that down the road. Next, John. Solutions, as I said earlier, the rainy day fund, we're going to tap into that. Federal fiscal stimulus, that will be coming shortly, but once again, you know, that may be a two-year fix. Increased efficiencies, the Governor, he originally went to the different departments and asked for a 6 percent cut, he then went back and asked for an 8 percent cut. So, they're lean and mean right now, the different departments. Program cuts, those programs that haven't been as successful as other, as some people thought, you're going to see some program cuts, unfortunately. And tax or fee increases, for example, I'll give you a tax increase, well, it's not an increase, but it'd be a tax, right now, Pennsylvania is the only state that does not tax smokeless tobacco. And not that that would fix our ills, but it would certainly bring about, I think the projection is somewhere around $100 million, between $100 million and $150 million to put towards the deficit. Next, John. That's it? Judge, can we have the lights?
So, that's it in a nutshell, and I'm going to get out of the way. And I think we should bring our panelists up now, and we're going to have ladies go first here. Holly Chase is from the Pennsylvania Office of Financial Education. Holly?
I think I'm going to have to ask you to turn off the lights again. I just want to say this disclaimer before I get started, first time wearing reading glasses, so you have to bear with me. I'm sure you can relate to that, but I just wanted to thank Representative Smith and his staff for giving the Office of Financial Education the chance to come in and talk to you. Many people do not know that we exist, so I'm really excited to be able to pass along what we do. Our office was created back in 2004 by the executive order of the Governor. And you won't find us out in the field giving financial education seminars or holding classes or doing counseling. We are very small staff of four people and we are not paid for by tax dollars, I have to put that in there. We're housed in the Department of Banking, which means we're paid for by the licensing fees of the agencies that we regulate, as well as fines and penalties. So, what we actually do is, we assist the educators that are out in the front lines. We assist teachers at K through 12, trying to help them incorporate financial education lessons into their subjects. We go out into the workplace and try to make that case for financial education as an important employee benefit. And then we work in communities, we work with community-based organizations, helping them to helping them to either start new financial education programs, train their educators, as well as improve the programs that they're already doing. And we have, we, we're not out in the public, but we try really hard, and I'll explain in just a minute, to connect people in the community to resources. Okay. Why financial education? I think it's pretty self-explanatory right now. I, I just want to say that financial knowledge and decision-making skills, it's not something that we're born with. It's not an instinct that we have. So I just want to let everyone relax if, if you feel that you are a bit shy on the financial knowledge. It's not something, again, that we're born with. Think for a minute where you learned about, about personal finance. Some of us learn from our parents. Our parents teach us how to walk, how to talk, how to behave, how to eat properly. But the reality is, is they'd rather spend their time talking to us about drugs and alcohol and sex than money. Schools, schools might be a place to learn about financial education and personal finance. But reality is, is only 4% of the school districts in the state of Pennsylvania actually have personal finance as a graduation requirement. Okay. And I think a lot of people have, have learned in the, sort of the experience of life. We learn more by our mistakes than our successes. And I think that goes true with, with money management. And I'm really glad because that means I'm smart. Okay. Let's talk about some real reasons for financial education. The first being, we need to gain confidence. We need to be empowered to make informed and responsible financial choices. We need to take action to improve our financial well-being. And we need to achieve personal control over money. And financial education can help us do that. What does community-based financial education look like? It's not rocket science. The first thing that, that financial education in the community will address is learning basic money concepts. Again, not rocket science. You can do the rest of the slide. Basically, what you're learning is all about what comes in, where does it go, what do you have, and what do you owe? In other words, learning about your income, how to maximize it, tracking your expenses, making wise purchasing choices. What kind of savings plans do you have? How are you building your savings and your investment assets? And then how are you using other people's money? I don't know if anybody has heard that. Credit or borrowing is using other people's money. Okay. Okay. Another part of financial education is improving the knowledge that you have of financial products out there. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone with the different mortgages that have been offered in the last several years. It's very difficult to keep up on them. And, you know, if you learned about mortgages 20 years ago, the, the game has changed. There were so many different products. So financial education can help us keep current on those important things. And just some categories. Banking products, okay? Whether you are using mainstream banks or credit unions. Oops. Stay there. Okay. Mainstream banks or credit unions. Or if you're, in fact, using alternative financial services. And what I mean by that are check cashing outfits, payday lenders. You know, those can be detrimental. So it's important to learn about, about banking products. Understand the different credit products out there. I mentioned mortgages. Also to understand insurance and investments. I know, easier said than done. But again, financial education will help to, to sort through these things. Okay. The last thing financial education can really help us do is develop those sound decision-making skills. First thing you need, you need to set goals. Because you know what? If you aim at nothing, you'll hit it every time. Okay? And then understanding our money values. Now, maybe you're the type of person who has to hide the shopping bags in the back of the car and take them in the house when nobody's home. Maybe you're the kind of person who thinks, "Wow, if I just had enough money to buy that BMW, I'd be so happy. Everything would be fine." Or maybe you're the kind of person who says, "I have to reuse my bathwater and put those extra pennies that I saved into my emergency fund." Now, I'm not going to tell you which one is right, which one is better. And I'm not going to tell you which one I am. But it's important to understand why we manage money the way we do, so that we can make changes working with those values versus working against them. Quick story. I like Dunkin' Donuts coffee. My vice is every day I go and get Dunkin' Donuts coffee, two bucks a day. I love it. I live for it. I value my Dunkin' Donuts coffee. Now, if somebody said to me, "Okay, you're, you're running a budget shortfall. You need to stop that." I value that, and I'm going to look at them, and I know that they're crazy. But if someone said to me, "Okay, look, you, you go and you have your coffee. Understand that. And I understand you're valuing that coffee. So why don't we take alternatives? Why don't you buy coffee two days a week from Dunkin' Donuts and make coffee in the morning and bring it the other three days?" Okay. That's, that's understanding my money values, trying to give me ways to work with them versus against them. And I still get my coffee, so I guess I'm happy. The, the next thing in making decisions about money, of course, you have to understand the product or the strategy that is being presented to you. Does it fit with what your goals are? Next. Are there any other options available for you? And the last thing, does it feel right? Listen to that little voice inside. If something doesn't feel right, it probably isn't. Okay, next. How is financial education taught? Well, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Financial education is avail, is available in a different capacity based on your comfort level and your learning styles. There's one-on-one counseling. That is education. If you're learning, learning this information on a one-on-one basis. Okay? Next. Workshops or classes. And we all think of education as being in school with a lot of boring classes and not enough recess. But that is part of it. And then there are self-study materials. Yes, that is education if you're teaching yourself. Printed booklets, pamphlets, books in libraries, of course. Videos, CD-based computer programs on personal finance, as well as online resources. Next. One of the resources, and this is one of our, our primary contacts to consumers out there, our office in particular, is our website, Your Money's Best Friend. And I encourage everyone to take bookmarks over there, which have Buck our mascot on it, and our website. I want to just give a little preparation, a little warning about online resources. First of all, you, okay, you can go to the next one. Sorry. This is a copy of our homepage. And notice that little dog in the corner. His name is Buck. He's our mascot. I had nothing to do with that, but it is cute. Okay, next. Okay, whoops. Sorry, go back to that. Sorry about that. One thing about, again, online resources, make sure that you are getting information and not a sales pitch. Many websites claim to be, have education, but it's really a pitch for their products. And also, one thing very important is make sure that you can find out who runs that website. Is it a company? Is it a nonprofit organization? They should have contact information. They should have a history of the website. Not just what we're about, but who we physically are. Okay, next. Who provides financial education in the community? Because I know you're just sitting there going, "Oh, I want some of that." Credit counseling agencies. You have the national, or the credit, Consumer Credit Counseling Services of Northeast PA. They have five or six locations in this area. When you are seeking out these agencies, make sure that they are certified by the National Foundation of, for Credit Counseling. And what they do, they have, of course, going through credit scores and your credit report. They also have one-on-one budget counseling. They have workshops, as well as real strategies to, to manage your debt. Housing counseling agencies, really, again, very important resource for you, especially if, if you are interested in purchasing a home. But I don't think that's really, really exciting these days. But what, what they also do is they help sort through preventing mortgage foreclosure. They help discuss reverse mortgages and what that's all about. They also have, they do one-on-one credit counseling as well. And make sure that if you go to a housing counseling agency, that they are certified by HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development. And also the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. It is a, a state agency that, that supports housing counseling in the state. Penn State Cooperative Extension. They have many programs on family financial management, so you can try them. As well as the United Way. The United Way, they have several projects which incorporate financial stability as part of their goals. So check them out. They also are running the VITA sites. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. VITA is the volunteer income tax assistant locations where a modest-income family can go and have their taxes done for free. So you're not paying those, those high fees to the other guys. So check that out. And they also have financial materials along at those VITA sites. And then don't forget some other ones. Credit unions, faith-based groups, family centers, senior centers, and check the YW and the YMCA's. If you want to know the specific locations of these agencies, you can go back to Your Money's Best Friend. We have a zip code search function. A little dog, Buck, if you go. The next one. Okay. Little dog Buck. You look in Buck's corner. All you need to do is put in your zip code and select a search range. Next one, please. Okay. You, next one again. Put in a search range, and what will come up? Or the agencies that are providing financial education or some kind of, of financial service in your area. There's information about programs and, and also events that are going on. So I, I encourage you to check that out. Organization details. Okay, you can move through this. I don't want to take up a lot of time. What should I do with my money right now? Good question. The first thing, talk about it. It's not going to go away if we don't talk about it. Most likely, this is, this, this, this economic crisis is, is causing some stress in, in your home. The best thing to do is to talk about it. Talk about it with your spouse or significant other. Understand how they're feeling about it. Also, if you have children, whether they're small children or through college age, they're hearing a lot of stuff in the media that might be really scary. So sit down, talk about it. Tell them what your situation is. Reassure them, because as Ken said, we can get through this. Next. Review your spending plan. If you don't have one, make one. And if you don't know how to make a spending plan, check out Your Money's Best Friend and look for those local resources. Review your current savings and investing programs. If you have investments, financial investments, stocks, bonds, or mutual funds, you know, take a look at them. Take a look at, hey, is this, am I comfortable with, with how these investments are performing as well as the risk tolerance? Am I just really uncomfortable with losing so much money? Maybe that's not appropriate. So, so do that. And to follow up with that, contact your financial institutions. You have questions, they are there to answer them. And the last thing is, again, check for local resources. So in sort of summary, I want to kind of recap why we seek out financial education and why we should today is to gain confidence, be empowered, to make informed choices, informed and responsible choices, as well as to get that courage to take action to improve your financial well-being, as well as to hopefully and finally achieve personal control over your money versus your money controlling you. Thank you.
Holly, thank you very much. And I might add, this evening, when, when all the speakers are finished, they will be available for questions. Our next speaker is Michael Byrne from the Pennsylvania Securities Commission. Michael's going to limp up here now because he had the misfortune of singing the Eagles' fight song in the company of some Pittsburgh Steeler fans. Very unfortunate.
I did it on, I did it on the day that God had set aside for ultimate Steelers victory. So on the way back, he got me. I slipped on some black ice. Fractured my ankle. I, I'd like to say I've learned my lesson, but whittle next year. All right. I'm going to break my, we have very limited time. I'm going to break my presentation into basically two different things. And say a little bit about the Pennsylvania Securities Commission and who we are, what we do. Then I'm going to say much more about how the hell did we get where we are? And I, I think you'll find it interesting. But the long and the short of it is the Pennsylvania Securities Commission is an independent agency of state, not federal government, state government. It's part of an effort to enforce what are known as blue-sky laws. Blue-sky laws were adopted to prevent fraud. We're not involved with market regulation and things of that nature. We are really there to prevent guys from coming out and selling you pie in the sky. That's where the blue sky comes from. Originated in Kansas. Pennsylvania was one of the early states to adopt it. Afterwards, we've had a consistent history of blue-sky laws, and it's one in effect right now. What does the Securities Act of 1972 do? First of all, if I want to sell a security to you in Pennsylvania, that security has to be registered or exempt from registration. And usually, the exemptions means that there's no need for registration with the Securities Commission. But you can find out whether a product that is being offered to you is registered by simply calling the Securities Commission. And it's a free call. You'll find the numbers on the back of our literature. We'll tell you whether the product is registered or exempt. If it isn't registered, run like hell. Next question. Who is selling me or telling me to buy this product? Are they registered? Because not only does the thing have to be registered, but the person who is selling you or advising you to buy the product has to be registered. And again, 800-600-0007. You can not only find out whether they're registered, but whether or not they have any disciplinary history. Got a disciplinary history as long as your arm? Run like hell. You don't want to be trusting them. You don't want to be trusting their advice. They're the obvious ones. The third prong of the Pennsylvania Securities Act is basically a commandment, "Thou shalt not commit fraud." Thou shalt not defraud Pennsylvanians. Thou shalt not engage in any schemes or artifices. Thou shalt not lie about the product that you're being sold. And thou shalt not tell people a little bit, but not tell them what they need to know in order to make a sound judgment, material information. That's the third prong of the Pennsylvania Securities Act. What is a security? Obviously, stocks, bonds, notes, the kinds of things that you're, you would think of right away. But investment contracts, which is a general catch-all category, includes things like, "I'm going to sell you a pay telephone. Then I'm going to lease it back from you, and I'm going to promise you 12%." It looks like they're selling you a thing. It's really an investment contract. And we've had a lot of that. You'll find up here, and grab it, investor alerts, a lot of information in it, including how to reach us. 800-600-0007. They get back to you very, very quickly with research. Usually, they can turn it around within 24 hours. If somebody wants you to act within 24 hours, run like hell. Because you want time to think about and evaluate. Now, who can be a victim of fraud? I'm telling you right now, anybody in this room can be nailed. Why? Because the guys that are doing it are really good. And they are ki- And they are capable of coming up with a product that looks like it's safe, is going to pay you a good return, and that you can't live without. Not what more you want to keep up with your neighbors. Most people don't get involved with frauds because they are greedy. They get involved with frauds because they're afraid. They don't know whether they're going to have enough money in their retirement. So they're looking for a, a way of positioning themselves better. Well, the guys that are doing this and the gals that are doing this know how to pitch to your fears, and they are very, very good at it. I brought up a book today called Confessions of a Scam Artist. I used to give a speech on how the people put together a scam. And then one day, I'm reading the Wall Street Journal, and here's a guy in jail who's giving my speech. He's wrote my speech. I had it right on. So, and it's so well-written, I grabbed these, put them in your bedside because it's great bedside reading. It's well-written by a guy who knew what he's talking about. What he's talking about is how we put together the swindles where we sold a large number of promissory notes, short-term promissory notes from a corporation, nine months. Many corporations. But what were all the corporations about? Either thinly or non-capitalized corporations. What, gee, what about this corporation? Why would I, maybe a senior citizen or whatever, want to invest in corporate note? Oh, well, this is guaranteed by an offshore insurance company. Absolutely worthless guarantee. Just another swindle. I mean, and I am telling you, the people who sell these things, whether they're doing it on phone, or they're doing it across the desk in their office, the promissory notes, the, the nine-month promissory notes were generally sold by independent insurance agents in your community, whom you trusted. The guys who pick up the phone, if you ever see the movie Boiler Makers, it is right on, or not Boiler Makers, Boiler Room, right on. Guys that get you, guys that keep you talking, and guys that close. They're the ones that get your money. Once the money leaves your pocket and goes to them, guys like me who want to get it back for you are probably not going to be able to do it. You're out of luck. That's, that's just the way it is. We, we do very well at getting money back as it goes. But the vast bulk of cases, the money's offshore gone. History. So that the cheapest thing you can do is pick up the phone, call us. If you're calling in Pennsylvania, it's a freebie. Where's the downside on that? If you have any hesitation about it, even if you don't have hesitation, you really want to do it, go to a financial professional and ask them about the deal. Pay them a few bucks for a couple hours' worth of work to look at it. Believe me, it's cheap money. Because you'd much rather have spent a fee for a couple hours on a financial professional than find out that you lost it all. Now, I guess one of the theories that has been out there for years is that, oh, rich people don't get swindled, right? Ask Bernie Madoff. He majored in swindling wealthy people who had tremendous access to advice. And there are people down in Florida who really thought that for the rest of their lives, the only thing that they had to do was wake up and play golf. And they have lost their homes, they have lost their fortunes. And we're not talking about small change here. We're talking about people who believed and gave Bernie Madoff everything they had, millions of dollars. So I have a couple other pamphlets up here. One, Ponzi schemes. That's what Bernie Madoff was doing. You probably, you've all heard the word Ponzi. I mean, here's a guy who, who came up with a scheme to make everybody rich in Boston. But what you don't realize is this happens day in and day out. Ponzi schemes. The great line from Warren Buffett was, "When the tide goes out, you find out who's swimming naked." That means they don't have the assets to pay principal or interest that they've promised. Bernie Madoff. When the tide went out and the economy went to hell, a lot of people said, hey, I don't care if I am making eight and a half percent per month, or per year, and it's always been there and always will, I just don't want to be in the market. Give me my 11 billion back. And, and Bernie couldn't raise the money end game. That, that's literally the long and the short of Bernie Madoff's. Why do people get involved in these things? Well, I brought another little pamphlet up. Affinity fraud is one great way. You know somebody who is participating, they're of the same ethnic background as you. Up here, I only have to mention the Polka King. Everybody remember the Polka King? I mean, you know, he nailed half the Polish community, not only in Pennsylvania, but elsewhere. Bernie Madoff nailed major Jewish charities. They trusted him. The essence of affinity fraud, whether it's political affinity fraud, ethnic affinity fraud, religious affinity fraud, it's all the same. Trust me, I'm like you, give me all your money. What's your remedy? Go get independent financial advice before you turn it over. Cheap at the price. Okay? Cheap at the price. So that's the things that I wanted to say about the Pennsylvania Securities Commission and what we see a lot of. But now, let's move in. How the hell did we get to where we are? I mean, those of us who do what we were told to do in financial education, save up money, defer compensation, defer consumption, worry about our old age, be careful. We're afraid to open our deferred compensation statements. The Dow has dropped by 50%. How did that happen? Well, I'll tell you how it happened in a few short words. The people in this country whom we entrusted to be in charge of a very important function, raising capital and distributing capital so that business could conduct business, betrayed us. There's no other way of saying it. They betrayed us. Instead, what occurred? Let's go back to 1907 quickly. 1907, there was a major failure of the markets in the United States. JP Morgan jumped in. He's looked at as the great savior. What led up to 1907 was a lot of gambling. You could go down to the local cigar shop or a store, known as a bucket shop, and bet whether or not a particular stock was going to go up or down today. After 1907, the states, beginning with New York and including Pennsylvania, outlawed bucket shops. By the time the statutes were passed in New York, there were no bucket shops left. They had rolled up their business. Let's fast forward to the Depression of 1929. Before that, there was rampant speculation, and particularly lending of money by banks who were taking depositors' funds in a very, very speculative, irresponsible fashion, with tremendous amounts of leverage going into the loans, with hardly any worthwhile security to, to back the loans. When the banks failed, and I'm sure there are people in this room who, if they searched through their dresser drawers, could find bank books from banks that no longer existed when the Depression hit. Their grandparents or their parents had their savings account go up in smoke, but they still had the bank books. And I know that happens up in northeastern Pennsylvania. A memento of, of what can go wrong. Well, the New Deal brought us a number of major reforms. One, we insured bank deposits. And up until recently, the insurance has been up to $100,000, but they just raised it to $250,000 on a bank deposit. So there's some degree of security for the individual homeowner today that didn't exist at the time of the Depression. Another thing that happened was they passed an act called Glass-Steagall, and it said, if you're a bank taking depositors' monies, commercial bank, you can't just go out and gamble with them on anything, and we're going to inspect what you're doing. That's one category of bank. That's your local bank that you're used to going to. There's another category of bank. It's kind of a merchant bank, the Bear Stearns, the Lehman Brothers. They're in the business of taking risks and funding businesses, and maybe it's, it's not going to turn out. But remember, those banks were basically partnerships. So if you made a lot of wrong decisions at that point in time, not only did the partnership go up in smoke, but your own pocket was on the line. Well, Solomon Brothers went public. Big split. Now, the people whose pockets are on the line are not the people making decisions. The separation of decision-making from financial responsibility was a serious change in the investment banking world. But it doesn't stop there. Graham Leach Bliley, passed by the United States Congress, said, "Commercial banks, like Citibank, can get involved with risk." Why? Because Citibank wanted to buy Travelers Insurance Company. Insurance companies are all about risk. Commercial banks should be about safety and soundness. So Citibank changed the law in Washington. And Citibank got to buy Travelers and got to take on risk. Well, you know where Citibank's stock is today. Okay? But it doesn't stop there. We still have on the books the bucket shop laws. Now, let me tell you something you've heard about swaps. I'm going to explain to you what a swap is. I have a mortgage. I owe my mortgage company $1,000 each month, let's say. The mortgage company has a risk. I might be late in paying my mortgage, or I might default and not pay the mortgage. They might not want to pay, take that risk. So they might want to pay somebody to take the risk. If Mike Byrne doesn't pay me the money that's due on March 1, you'll pay it. Well, there's a, a logical, social purpose to the bank being able to throw off the risk to somebody who's willing to pay it for, take it for a fee. That is what is known as a covered swap. The risk gets swapped to somebody else. But there is a real risk, and it is owned by the person who's trying to pay the fee to get rid of it. Now let's talk about a naked swap. Two guys are sitting across the street from Mike Byrne's house. One guy says to the other, "I'll bet you that Mike Byrne's mortgage payment, that he's not going to make it on time this month." And the other guy says, "You're wrong." That is a naked swap. Neither of those people have an interest in whether or not I pay my mortgage payment on time. They are making a bet. The federal government, in the Commodities Future Modernization Act, pulled the authority from states to regulate those kinds of swaps. And they basically said, the naked swaps cannot be, the bucket shop laws can't be regulated or applied to the naked swaps. Now that meant that if you were sitting on Wall Street and your job is to accrete capital for businesses in Scranton and businesses in Wilkes-Barre and throughout the United States, you could now go in in the morning and make bets. It's like going to the ballpark and betting on balls and strikes. You have no interest in whether the, the team wins or loses. You basically, all the risk takes place when you create the transaction, the bet on the ball or the strike. And that's what they did all day. They bet on balls and strikes. Now, somebody wins, somebody loses. They got paid big salaries while they bet on balls and strikes. At the end of the year, regardless of whether they won or lost for the year, they got paid big bonuses for betting on balls and strikes. Now, what did that do to help put capital in, in, in businesses in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre and throughout Pennsylvania? Nichivol. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. But they made big bucks. And that's only one of the products that were out there. There's a great book, if you're interested in drilling down a little bit on what the products are. It's called Trillion Dollar Meltdown by a guy by the name of Morris. It's 170 pages. It's very, very well-written. It's very understandable, and it describes the products. It describes the process. We have lost our intellectual integrity and our sense of values concerning what are we doing? We had money available so cheap that it was really a zero rate of return. And we were borrowing from the entire rest of the world. Now, as I'm afraid the president said the other night, it's the reckoning. Holly mentioned reverse mortgages. Well, let's go back a little bit. The Arabs attack the World Trade Center. What's the remedy? Go out to Walmarts and buy. Run yourself further into debt. Well, that didn't work very well. Mortgage your house and buy. Go further into debt. Now, reverse mortgage your house and buy. I mean, sooner or later, there is a day of reckoning. And how many Chinese manufactured trinkets can we handle until we have to really pay the piper? We've, we've been borrowing, borrowing, borrowing from the Chinese, from the Arabs. Now it's pay the piper time. And believe me, we're going to have to bite some very, very difficult bullets because this is mathematical. You cannot live in a world that is make-believe indefinitely. The Russians learned that. They had a system whereby the Russian economist, economy was all based upon reports. So if, if, if a individual who was the, in charge of a factory gave a report that said he made his quotas, he didn't go to the Gulag this year. If he didn't make his quotas, he went to the Gulag. Now, that's very simple, the answer to that. You always made your quotas. However, when the numbers get ignored and they get further and further off, you can't begin to even, it's not rational. You can't plan. And after Chernobyl, Gorbachev says, hey, you know, the numbers make no sense when you look at them. How can we, how can we? The whole system is screwed because the numbers make no sense. Well, in an odd way, we've done almost the same thing with our economy. The numbers make no sense. Eight years ago, a very, very wealthy individual from northeastern Pennsylvania, whom I met at a, a party, after Enron, said that he had pulled all of his money out of the market. He said, "If you can't trust the numbers from the accountants, then the foremost accounting firm in the country that was doing Enron's audits, how can you make decisions?" We, we have to rely. We've got to get some degree of intellectual integrity about it. And every one of us has to push for it because it's not going to happen as long as people can get away with something less. Yeah, we're going to pay the piper. It's a very, very strong... It's a very, very strong economy, and the representative is absolutely right. We are sitting in northeastern Pennsylvania, right here today. I mean, this area was founded on coal. I mean, your ancestors came here because of minerals and coal especially. You've got a second chance as a result of this Marcella Shale. If Pennsylvania husbands that right, we have the ability to rebuild the infrastructure in this state to turn it into something that hasn't existed since the Garden of Paradise. If we blow it, it's just a terrible loss. But we have that second chance here more than anywhere else. Yeah, the budget's bad in Harrisburg, but it's nothing like any of the sand states, California, Arizona. You know, it's just a minor blip compared to what's going on in California. And we'll come out of this thing, but we have to have some degree of intellectual integrity. And when somebody says that, yes, you have perpetual motion, yes, there is cold fusion, yes, money comes down from the clouds like manna, you'd better take two steps back and say, "Maybe this week, but it ain't going to be there forever." And I think that's what you're facing. So I'll be around if you have any questions. I mean, I really try to concentrate a lot of stuff into a very short period of time.
Michael, thank you. Very enlightening, but very scary at the same time. Next, we have Dan Mallinson from the Pennsylvania Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you.
Is there a Brenda Gary here? Brenda, your granddaughter called?
Deja?
She's called. She's going to look you through.
She's trying to call you, and she said it's an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I want to thank you all for having me out tonight. First, how is everybody here?
Good.
How is everybody here? Okay. Well, I'm from the Public Utility Commission. I'm going to talk about energy, so I want to make sure we all have energy. All right? We're all in here. All right. Tonight, I want to talk just briefly about what we do and what we offer, and then I'm going to talk about other methods of assistance that are out there for paying your utility bills. The Public Utility Commission regulates in Pennsylvania electric, natural gas, water, telephone, taxi cabs, and other common carriers. We don't regulate... I'm going to annoy... I'm sorry right away to the camera guy, because I like to wander. We don't regulate municipal services, which are like generally municipal water services, or I'm from Philadelphia, so the Philadelphia Gas Works used to be a municipal gas company. It got big enough that we were given the authority to regulate it, but usually there's little municipal services we don't. But everything else we do. And as Representative Smith talked about earlier, energy is... He talked briefly about rate caps, and I guess everybody here is in PPL? Is your electric company, right? So are you aware that these electric rate caps are coming off at the end of this year? The end of 2009? Okay. Unless there is discussion in the General Assembly, and the Governor has asked for a phase-in of those rates, but the General Assembly has to do that. But I will talk about a program that PPL currently offers to help phase in those rates. But what I want to talk about today is... My primary message is to be proactive, especially now. Unfortunately, these rate expirations, rate cap expirations are coming probably at one of the worst times with the accompanying financial crisis. And it's important to know as a consumer what you can do to get help paying your bills and to help reduce your energy usage. I'm hoping this was going around. I had printed... I think there should be enough copies if this got stopped somewhere, if we can keep it moving. But I have a PowerPoint with a bunch of phone numbers, and that's the most important thing in this PowerPoint that I want everybody to take home. On there is... On there, there are sort of two different programs that I talk about. There are programs that the state offers, and there are programs that the utility offers. One program that you may have heard of that the state offers is the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, LIHEEP. That's administered by the Department of Public Welfare. And in there is the phone number... Yeah, sorry. On the front page, there is the phone number for the Lackawanna County Assistance Office, and that's the number to call for LIHEEP help. There are two components to LIHEEP. You'll see it on there. There's a cash grant, which you qualify for based on your income. And back on this back table, I have a whole bunch of information. One of the pieces I have is a LIHEEP brochure. So you can see in there, in that brochure, the income guidelines and more information about the program, plus the phone numbers on the back to call, to apply. But the cash program is just a flat grant that DPW gives based on your income, and it goes towards utilities, electric, natural gas. It's called fuel-neutral, so it doesn't just go to utilities that we regulate. If you heat your house with wood or coal or home heating oil, it can go to any of those heating sources, not just electric or natural gas. There's also the crisis grant, a part of LIHEEP. That's for if you're experiencing what they call a home heating emergency. If you're in danger of running out of fuel, whatever, like we talked about, fuel-neutral, whatever that fuel may be, you can qualify for a crisis grant. If your heater goes out in the winter, that's another thing that qualifies for the crisis grant. There are a few other things. The one thing I'll say about that, though, is it's important to not wait until that fuel tank goes empty, because LIHEEP... DPW works very, very hard to get... Once you apply for that crisis grant, to get that fuel to you as quickly as they can. But DPW has seen a huge increase in applications this year for LIHEEP and for LIHEEP funds. Now, wonderfully, we have more funds this year than we've ever had before for the LIHEEP program, so there's a lot of money out there. But there are a lot of people trying to get it. So there may be some... A little bit of delay between when you apply and when you get the money. So it's important not to wait until that fuel tank goes empty. They can give out crisis grants, you know, just sort of when you're getting close to empty. Make sure you... The message tonight is, again, to be proactive. There are a few other programs. Primarily, in Pennsylvania, we require the large utilities to have customer assistance programs, and then PPL and UGI, Penn Natural Gas, which I believe is the gas company in this area, they all have different programs. You'll see on there... They have budget billing programs, which help you level out your bills. They analyze your average usage, and then they average out your bill, and then every quarter or every half-year, they adjust that based on what your real usage is. But that's a great way to budget. We talked about the importance of making a spending plan, and utilities are an important part of that. And you know that your gas is probably going to be higher in the winter, and your electric is probably going to be higher in the summer, you know, winter heating, summer air conditioning. And this will allow you to level out those costs. There are also programs that you can roll in to actually get grants from the utilities. They also have something called the Low-Income Usage Reduction Program, which is where they will either... They will help you improve your homes that you use less electric, whether it be replacing inefficient appliances or sealing your house or adding insulation, things like that. They can help you fund those projects. So that's some of the other assistance that is out there. Another program that I just want to briefly mention that the state participates in, and I have a brochure there for, is the Keystone Help Program. This is the home energy loan program in Pennsylvania. And what this does is it's a fixed-interest-rate loan that you can apply for, and you can apply for with just about sort of any credit rating. It's a great option for those who can't get low interests, like home equity loans or things like that. You can get a loan anywhere from $1,000 up to $35,000 for energy improvements at your house. So if you own an older home, it may be very drafty, doesn't have a lot of insulation, you need sort of a whole-home approach, you can get a larger loan to get your whole house taken care of. Or if you just want a more efficient air conditioner or something like that, those loans will... You can get a loan for those items as well. You can also get a loan for home energy audits, where someone will come into your house and will... They do this really cool analysis. They put a blower door in your front door, and they have an infrared camera where they can see the heat. I think it's the heat escaping the house. But anyway, they can see where the inefficiencies are in your house, and then they give you this breakdown of, you know, this is the least-cost and most-effective item that you should do first. And then it sort of goes down a list from there. Another piece that I have over there that I would like everybody to please take is this step-by-step energy-saving guide. There are many, many things that we can do ourselves, or we can have maybe family help out with around the home, that are very low-cost. Caulking windows. If you have single-pane windows, which are less energy-efficient than double-pane windows, you don't necessarily have to go out and buy brand-new windows. You can put plastic in the windows, which will help prevent cold air from getting in and hot air from going out. Simple things like putting a door sweep if you have a gap under your front door. A door sweep makes a huge difference in energy savings. It will prevent the hot air and the cold air in the summer from going out of your house. So there are a lot of things that you can do yourselves to save quite a bit of money. Also, on that PowerPoint sheet in the back, there's a website. The Commission... There's both our website, thepuc.state.us, where we have more information, many, many more conservation tips, a lot of our materials are on our website, and also the TurnSealSave website. That's a program that, for six years, the Commission has had our... It's called our Prepare Now Campaign, which is where we do events like this. We go out and talk to people, especially in the winter months, about preparing for high energy costs. And the Governor has, for the past few years, had his Stay Warm Initiative. And this is... This TurnSealSave website is a partnership between the two of us, and there are great resources on there for how to reduce your energy usage and save quite a bit of money. The Governor says they've calculated that if you follow the recommendations on that website, you could save up to $740 a year in energy costs, and those are things that we've talked about tonight. Door sweeps and caulking your windows, turning the thermostat down a little bit in the winter and turning it up a little bit in the summer. Every few degrees, you can either turn your thermostat down in the summer or down in the winter, up in the summer. You save quite a bit in energy costs. Things like setting your hot water heater at 120 degrees can save quite a bit of energy. You don't need your hot water heater to be putting out, you know, water at 140, 150 degrees, because that's just too hot for you to handle anyway. You're going to end up turning on the cold water and wasting all that energy to heat up the water, the hot water that you don't need. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was what the Commission offers in terms of help. There are sort of two things, two big things. One is shut-offs, and one message that we want to tell people is that your electric and your gas, you know, can be shut off if you don't pay your bill. Sorry, I want to get these... If you don't pay a bill, don't pay a deposit, don't follow through on a payment arrangement with the company. The companies can shut off your utilities. Now, in the winter, if you fall into those low-income guidelines, the 250% of the federal poverty limit, which is a lot of language, but again, the information is on our materials, the utilities can't shut off your natural gas or your electric during the winter months. So from the end of November to the end of March, to March 31st, they can't shut it off if you fall into those guidelines. But if you are above those guidelines, they can shut off your utilities during that time. And then, of course, once April 1st hits, that's sort of what we call, and we unfortunately call, "shut-off season." That's when the utilities, PPL, will start shutting people off again. And I know... I don't know about this area. As I said, my familiarity is with Philadelphia, but we were at an event last Friday, almost a week ago, and my friend Pat from Philadelphia, who's a sort of a consumer educator like me, but for Pico, the electric company there, she said that they're anticipating that Pico will be shutting off 1,000 people a day, starting in April 1st. So it is a reality, and that's why I talked about the energy assistance programs that the utilities have and that the state has. Because a couple of things with the shut-offs and the bills. The first is, it's very important to open your bill. I've met a lot of people, especially in Philadelphia, that they get to that point in the month when they have to pay their utilities or they're paying bills, and they know they can't afford it that month, so they'll just leave it sit, and they'll wait until they can afford it. But it's very important to open those bills, because that's where the utilities are going to say, whether you're behind in your payments or you're in danger of shut-off, that's where they send those notices, they send those messages. So it's very important, first, to just open your bill and read it. Now, if you know you're going to be having financial difficulty, someone loses a job, somebody gets sick, something like that, and you're going to have trouble paying those bills, please call the company. Don't be afraid to call the utilities. As I said, they have these programs in place. That's the first stop. We recommend people call the utilities, let them know that you're having a financial difficulty, and they will work with you to pay that bill. There's no sense in being afraid of the utilities. They are a business. You know, they want to make that money, they want to bring that money in, so they will work with you, and they will try to enroll you in these programs to get help if you qualify. And the last thing I'll say is, and this is the second part of what we do, if you have trouble with the utility, or you're not happy with the payment arrangement that they put you on, or you're not able to keep a payment arrangement that they put you on, please call us. We have a Bureau of Consumer Services that handles complaints. That's all they do. They have full-time investigators that will get the case, and then they'll talk to you, they'll talk to the utility, and they try to work the problem out. There are informal complaints, informal complaints, and I don't... For time's sake, I don't want to get into the difference, but if you call us, or you go onto our website, we have a complaint form on the website, or you can call the phone number that's on the very front of this sheet, the consumer hotline. It's also the phone number that is on our bags that many of you have gotten and on all of our materials. They will connect you to the Bureau of Consumer Services, and you can file a complaint, and they will try to work the issue out. So please, my primary message is tonight, be proactive. If you're having financial trouble, call the utilities. Try to work out... Try to work that out with them. Be enrolled in their customer assistance programs if you qualify. And if you have problems, please don't be afraid to call us and bring us in, because that's what we do. And the last part of being proactive is acting now to reduce your electric usage, because if you wait until January 1st, 2010, and you wait until then to seal your house and do those things, and you know, that's when the rates will go up after rate caps come off in PPL, you're going to lose all of those savings that you could have had. So it's important to act now. And, you know, sort of one possibly good, you know... I guess we could call it a positive byproduct of the economic situation, is that energy prices have really come down. Electric prices in the market have really come down. You don't see that, because your prices, electric rates are still capped. But those prices won't stay down forever. So the more you can do now to reduce your electric usage and to enroll in these programs, the more you'll save into the future. So I'll be around to answer questions if you have utility issues. You can ask me those questions, and I will get you the information about filing complaints and calling the Commission. If you have questions about rate caps or conservation, I'll be here. So I don't know if we're going to take questions as a group, or we're just going to... I don't know what the plan was, but I will be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well... Dan, Michael, and Holly, I want to thank... Dan, Michael, and Holly, I want to thank each of you for being here tonight and taking your time. I feel as if this was very informative, and I hope all of you feel the same. And earlier today, I asked my mother-in-law if she was going to come to the town hall meeting, and she said, "Well, what do I get free?" I said, "You know, you're becoming a senior citizen now. You ride the bus free. What else do you want?" So I hope tonight you got something free, and if you did, I'll consider it a success. But, you know, this, tonight is our sixth town hall meeting. And my goal, when I first took office, was to bring state government to northeastern Pennsylvania. And so many people think that Harrisburg and the state capital is a far-off land, and it's a big bureaucratic mess. And several, two months ago, Dwight Evans contacted me, and Dwight Evans is our appropriations chairman for the Democratic Party in the House of Representatives. And he said, "I'd like to take this economics forum on the road." So we set it up over at Marywood University. And it was open to the public, and it was well-attended. And he described what our challenges are and what the process is for the budget in Harrisburg. And I want to continue to have town hall meetings, to bring state government to each and every one of you. Because I truly believe that when we educate the people and get them familiar and comfortable with state government, then they believe in their government. And when they believe in their government, then they participate in their government. And when that happens, then we have a strong democracy. And at the end of the day, that's what we all want. So, thank you for coming this evening. Our experts are here to answer any questions you might have, and I'm here for anyone that might have questions for me as well. Thank you very much.